Okay, I call the December 12th, 2022 meeting to order. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adequate notice this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon on January 20, 2022, and as amended on December 2nd, 2022, in the Asbury Park Press at December 8th, 2022, in the Beacon, and by posting a notice in Fort River and Little Park Post Offices, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Council as required by the Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Present.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Here.
Mrs. Downing?
Present.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Malina?
Present.
We're going to go into executive session. Be resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential legal matters, including but not limited to, the current case load, confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the private session is estimated to be approximately 60 minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Move.
Okay, all were in favor?
Aye.
All right, good evening. We're going to continue with our meetings. Okay, so we're going to start with our student representatives, all the way to my right down the end. Good evening, folks. Go ahead.
Good evening. Hi, guys. My name is Jimmy Tom Riddle, and I am the senior class president.
Hi, I'm Hannah Miller, I'm the executive board president.
Freshman news, class of 2026. The freshman class will be holding a Chipotle fundraiser on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. The freshman class will hold a Candygram event in February. Sophomore news, class of 2025. Lawn signs will be getting started for the winter season. Junior news, class of 2024. The junior class is planning a possible Surf Taco and/or a Gertrude Hawk fundraiser. Senior news, class of 2023. The senior t-shirts are in the works.
Executive Board news. The advisors, Ms. York, meetings are in the lecture hall. Battle of the Classes. Battle of the Classes is a rivalry between grades to enhance school spirit. This happens between December 19th and the 22nd. Students earn points for their grades by participating in activities, including Coin Wars, grade t-shirts, a game night, field day events in the gym, a food drive, hallway decorations, and banners that represent each grade's theme. This year, there will be an event called Coin Wars, and it will start on December 19th and end on December 21st. Each grade is assigned a large water jug in the cafeteria during lunches. Pennies equal positive points. Put in each water jug for your grade. Silver change and paper money equals negative points. Put these in the water jug of other grades. The grade with the most positive points is the winner. Game Night, Tuesday, December 20th, will be held from 7:00 to 6:00 PM in W Hall. Students can enter through the front W Hall door. Admissions is $5 to enter if you are not wearing a Battle of the Classes t-shirt. Free, if you are wearing a current Battle of the Classes t-shirt. T-shirt will be for sale at the door. The events are Jenga tournament, Rubik's Cube race, Wordle password, Apples to Apples, Jeopardy password, Unwrap Present While Wearing Oven Mitten Race, and you can watch or play, and all are welcome. Thursday, December 21st, is the final battle in the high school gymnasium from 10:00 AM to 11:05 AM. The themes. The ninth grade's are medieval times, the 10th is futuristic, the 11th grade is the 1920s, and 12th grade are the Greeks and Romans. All of the profit from selling of the Battle of the Classes t-shirts is used as prize money. First place gets 50%, second place gets 30%, third place gets 15%, and fourth place gets 5%. The next SGA meeting will be held on Monday, January 9th, at 1:40 PM. All are welcome. We would now like to invoke Reese Paget over to the podium.
Reese Paget is a three-season varsity athlete. She participates in soccer in the fall, basketball in the winter, and track and field in the spring. She's involved in both interact and SGA at the Lacy Township High School. Even though she has many activities, she still is in good standing academically. Reese can be found wearing school spirit apparel on the daily, and is always willing to help out a friend in need. She's committed to her sports, clubs, and her job in and outside of school. She also volunteers as a coach to younger children for the Berkeley Soccer Program. Reese is overall a well-rounded individual and puts hard work into everything she does. For all of these reasons, SGA has selected Reese Paget as the unsung hero for the month of December. Congratulations, Reese. That concludes our comments for the evening. We wish all of you a wonderful holiday season, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you ready?
I am.
Have at.
All right, welcome. And before I begin, I just want to thank Hannah and Jimmy, and congratulations to Reese. And Reese, I'm picking your families here with us. So they have to stand up and be recognized too. It's what we do. So come on, stand up, be recognized. So we always say, our students are successful because of their families and their teachers. So congratulations. All right, so like we always do in December, and we're always excited to do this, I am going to invite our Lacy Township High School Select Ensemble, under the direction of Mr. Ollender, to perform some holiday songs for us. And they're going to make their way in. So I'm going to ask the board if you want to see it from the front, if you want to make your way to the stage.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Everybody know Mr. Ollender?
Yes.
Choir, Angelin. The Grand House, Angelin. West Altus. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Ollender, and I'm the director of Choral Music here at Lacy Township High School. If you're able and willing, please rise for our national anthem. Thank you.
(Music) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air proved through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
At our Lacy Township High School Autumn High.
To ye our mamma Mars sing for Lacy Township High Has filled our days with changes and taught us how to try For excellence in all we do and all we strive to be We will be a tribute to the lion's pride and loyalty.
So as many of you know, we have our winter choir band concert tomorrow night here at the high school, starting at 7:00. And we're just going to sing a couple songs from our concert, and a little preview, and hope that you guys can all make it out tomorrow afternoon. So this is "Get the Halls."
Deck the halls with boughs of holly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Don't be now our gay apparel, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Show the ancient yuletide carol, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. See the blazing yule before us, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Follow me in merry pleasure, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. What a tale of yuletide treasure, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Pass away the old year passes, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Tell the new ye lads and lasses, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Sing we joyous all together, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. He who saught the wind and weather, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Hoar of hallowed sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Glorious awake! Christmas is here, bringing good cheer, to young and old, being in the hall." Ding dong, ding dong, bells are stong, green turtle ring, all can relate. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how the hound brings in the sound of harp and piano, how the hound brings in While people sing songs of cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, merry, merry Christmas, merry, merry, merry Christmas. All the presents, all the presents, dear, dear, dear. Hoar of hallowed sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Glorious awake! Christmas is here, bringing good cheer, to young and old, being in the hall." Ding dong, ding dong, bells are stong, green turtle ring, all can relate. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how the hound brings in the sound of harp and piano, how the hound brings in While people sing songs of cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, merry, merry Christmas, merry, merry, merry Christmas. All the presents, all the presents, dear, dear, dear. What a tale of yuletide joy, what a tale of yuletide joy. Ding dong, ding dong.
You mind if I play some keyboard? This next one is called "Mary Did You Know."
Check if there's more to you.
That is a good song.
Mary, did you know that your baby boy will come to make up on water?
Did you know that your baby boy will serve sons and daughters?
Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you do? The child that you delivered has soon delivered you. Mary, did you know that your baby boy will give sign to our life?
Mary, did you know?
Did you know that your baby boy will come and soar with his hand?
Did you know that your baby boy has walked where angels strike?
When you kiss your little baby, he gives the face of God. Oh, Mary, did you know?
Mary, did you know?
Mary, did you know? In you grow. The light will see, the dark will hear, the dead will live again. The rain will glee, the dove will speak, the praises of God. Mary, did you know that your baby boy is part of all creation? Mary, did you know that your baby boy will bring good to the nation? Did you know that your baby boy has had his birth in glade? Do you see, my child, you're holding is the great I am? The great I am?
You're ready, right? At this time, I want to recognize Zoe Malena on our flute. Quick note about Zoe. I have Zoe back at Fort River School, back today as a fourth grader, beginner band student. She is now a senior band member, so let's get Zoe over to the podium. And a chronicle that she's continuing in the art system. So this is what I think. This is "While the Snow Is Sleeping."
All the days are on the run. Earth goes closer to the sun. All the winds around us creeping. While the snow is sleeping, sleeping.
Morning skies are turning gray.
Morning skies are turning gray.
All the colors are on the way. The trees are looking pretty.
Ah, ah, ah. The snow is sleeping. The sleepy snow lies in her bed. Earth makes ready for her jet. From her summer, she will rise. She will rise. She will rise and bring her glory through the skies, through the skies. Mary, now the forest's far. Waiting for a night in storm.
A little light in storm.
See the holy trees are weeping. While the snow is sleeping.
While the snow is sleeping.
While the snow is sleeping. While the snow is sleeping.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. This is just a little preview. We can't do all of our records tonight. But we will let that end with one of my favorites. It's in the same Philphine Sing Along. This is "Have Yourself a Merry Little Christmas." We hope you enjoy.
Hi.
Hi.
Christmas future is far away. Christmas past is past. Christmas present is here today. Bringing joy never last. Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Your heart revived. For now all our troubles will be out of sight. Have yourself a merry little Christmas. With a yuletide gay. For now all our troubles will be cast away. Here we are, present all the days. Waiting for the days of yore. Evil friends who are dear to us And are near to us once more. Through the years, we all will be together In the face of love. And the shining star of one, the highest bow. And have yourself a merry little Christmas now. Evil friends who are dear to us And are near to us once more. Through the years, we all will be together In the face of love. And the shining star of one, the highest bow.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, good luck tomorrow night. And we wish you a wonderful, happy holiday season. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, part.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
How many?
Thank you. Thank you. That was awesome.
Thank you.
That's great. Impressive. Have a good night. Yeah, I have a crazy dream. Oh, nice. All right. All right. Well, if that didn't get you into the holiday spirit, I'm going to recommend you go home and watch "The Grinch." That was amazing. Another round of applause to Mr. Ollender and our head school president. Okay, it is now time for our seniors of the month. Mr. King, you ready?
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. We're here to celebrate seniors of the month. Our first senior of the month is actually a carryover from last month. He was not able to make it, so the first senior of the month is Kiran McGovern. Kiran, come on down. A round of applause for his family who are here to attend. You all, come up here, Kiran. All right, we'll watch a short clip on Kiran's accomplishments.
Our next senior of the month is Kiran McGovern.
I'm Kiran McGovern, and I'm proud to be November Senior of the Month.
Kiran told me, "Mr. V, can you say some words about me? Señor V, it's an honor having you as a teacher." And I said, "No, no, 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 Kiran. What an honor, what a privilege to have you in my classes."
Some of the activities that I participated in in high school are the swim team, which I've been on for all years of my high school career. I'm also in student government, and I've been the treasurer since junior year. I also am inducted into the National Honor Society.
Kiran, you know, you are such an amazing young man. The work that you're doing, not just academically, which is top-notch in the Leadership Academy of Humanities, but also what you've been doing for your Eagle Scout is some of the best work that I've ever seen from a student in my 15-year career. You're making us proud. Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work and keep changing Lacey Township one step at a time.
Outside of school, I am a club swimmer, and I swim for the O C Y Tiger Sharks. I've been swimming with them since I was eight years old. I'm also a Boy Scout, and I recently made the rank of Eagle Scout.
Kieran has been an excellent, excellent Spanish poor student. In the classroom, Kieran has been very, very polite, very uh, nice, volunteering, helping out all the students.
One of my favorite memories in high school was when the swim team won the states back in 2020. And that was a very exhilarating time for us as it was a big win because we haven't won a states in forever, basically.
Watching you and Jimmy during the question-answer sessions after you would each present your projects and each start to grill each other, almost like it became a competition of who could stump the other on being the expert of their topic. It was fun to watch, but it was done the right way. It was done maturely. It was done at the highest academic setting. And at the end of the day, you both made sure that you made each other better coming away from those moments. So I really appreciated that. I miss them in our class, and you know, those are moments you really can't get back.
I plan to get my master's degree in mechanical engineering and pursue a career in that field.
Again, Kieran, congratulations for being selected November Senior of the Month.
All right, our first December senior of the month is Sophia Wolfarth. Sophia, come on down. Her family's in attendance. A round of applause for them, please. And I will watch a short clip on her accomplishments.
Hello, happy holidays. We're here once again to celebrate our seniors of the month. Let me check my daughter nicely to see who we have this month. Ah, our first senior of the month is Sophia Wolfarth. We're going to watch a short video of her accomplishments now.
I am Sophia Wolfarth, and I'm proud to be named December's Senior of the Month at Lacey Township High School.
Congratulations, Sophia, on Student of the Month. I can't think of a student more deserving than you.
Congratulations, Sophia, for being Senior of the Month. It is a well-deserved recognition, and I'm very proud of you.
Here at Lacey Township High School, I compete on the varsity gymnastics team as well as the varsities girls golf team. I'm also an N H S member and secretary of Interact Club. I also participate in S G A, and I'm one of the presidents of Biology Club, and I'm also on the math team.
Sophia, all your hard work and attention to detail has always set you apart, and I know you're going to be such a great success outside of Lacey Township.
Sophia is an amazing student. She sets herself apart in class. She takes A P Biology and works with the Biology Club as an officer. She is always ready, willing, and able to take on an assignment or some sort of task in class, and she is, always does it with a smile.
My favorite memories here at the high school are going to football games and the hockey games during the winter, as well as going to all of our school dances and just getting to be with my friends throughout the day for all my four years here.
Sophia, four years in STEM, you've gone through so many projects together through robotics and sea perch and building so many things. I wish I could buy stock in your future. I know you're going to have much great success.
Sophia works very well in class with other students. She works cooperatively very well and also works hard to gain an understanding of the material and have a good grasp of it.
My future plans after high school are to go on to a four-year college or university for architecture or architectural engineering, and then hopefully receive a master's degree after that.
Sophia, I can't wait and see which lucky university gets to have you next year. Best of luck.
Congratulations, Sophia. Very proud of you again, and I wish you the best of luck in the future.
Our next senior of the month for December is Casey Simonsen. Casey, come on up. His family is in attendance. Let's keep a round of applause going for them as well. And we have a short clip on his accomplishments as well.
That's great, Sophia. Good luck with everything in the future. Our next senior of the month is Casey Simonsen. We'll watch a short video on Casey's accomplishments at this time.
Hi, my name is Casey Simonsen, and I've been named December's Senior of the Month of Lacey Township High School.
Hi, I'd like to congratulate Casey Simonsen with his accolade of receiving the award of December Student of the Month.
Casey Simonsen is an exceptional student athlete who goes above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to helping his classmates. In our Holocaust Human Rights and Genocidal Studies class, he's always talking and inspiring his classmates to get their work done and, and do an exceptional job.
I'm on the swim team as one of the senior captains, and I am the vice president of N H S, and I'm also in intergenerational club.
Casey not only excels within the classroom and throughout the hallways as a leader, but also as a leader, he is the captain of the swim team. He has had a major presence within the swim team over the last four years, including when he was part of the race that won the state championship finals when he was a freshman.
One of my favorite memories about high school would have to be the 4:00 AM wake-up to go to swim practice and have a good practice with my teammates, and also all the soccer games to go and support my friends.
He's always, you know, inspiring his peers to get involved. But one thing that stands out in particular is the fact that he always has a smile on his face. He's always kind, considerate, and respectful to not only his classmates, but teachers, and I just really respect the fact that he comes here to learn and really contributes to what our high school is all about as far as having pride, and I think that's really important.
One of my favorite things to do outside of school, since I'm a foodie, is to go out to all sorts of different restaurants and places to eat with my friends and family.
He's a team player. He's very loyal. He's a good friend, and he is something that would represent what a golden paw stands for in athletics.
My plan for after high school would be to go to college and major in sports health.
Again, I'd like to congratulate Casey Simonsen on being recognized for December's Senior of the Month. I know, I'm confident, he'll be very successful in all of his future endeavors because he's kind, he's always considerate, and he's just an amazing young man.
All right, one more round of applause for our students of the month. I now turn the podium over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Zelensky, for Staff Members of the Month. Okay, not to be outdone, our staff members of the month. Teresa Garr is here. Come, down here. Have you seen this? You know why I care?
I've, I've seen a letter.
Go up here. Oh, you've seen it? This is Nicole's letter. All right, so it's a.
Oh, this letter, no, I haven't seen this. No, I haven't seen that.
All right, so Teresa was nominated by Tracy Whalen, who you've never met.
No.
Okay, she's a staff member of ours, and she's never met. I've honestly never met her. So she writes, this is Tracy Whalen. "I've honestly never met her personally, but my story tells it all. Teresa is my daughter's bus driver. My daughter is in high school. On Monday, she dropped my daughter and several other students off at their stop. As she did so, a truck pulled up in front of my house, and the person in the truck began talking to my daughter. The bus driver pulled in front of my house, called my daughter over, and checked to see if she knew who that was or if she felt safe. My daughter explained it was her grandfather." I'm over. Exactly, us old guys should not be anywhere near there, right? I agree. "My daughter explained it was her grandfather. I'm overwhelmed with the gratefulness that she was watching out for my daughter and most likely every student she interacts with each day. If that wasn't my dad or someone my daughter didn't know, or who knows who it could be, knowing her bus driver is aware makes me thrill and gives me peace of mind I can't thank her enough." That's why you are our staff member of the month this month. Really awesome. If you've never ridden a school bus, wow. It's a debut for us every day. Really amazing. Our second one is nominated by Cara Ruff. Uh, this is Janine Matisse. She's not here? She's not here, right? Janine Matisse? Okay, so we're just going to read about her. She's a special ed teacher at Millpon School. Mrs. Matisse, Matisse is the teacher of our Behavioral Disabilities Program at Millpon. She goes above and beyond for her students on a daily basis. She often works at, on her own hours at home out of the goodness of her heart and for the families of her students. She is selfless, hardworking, and always maintains a positive attitude despite the situation. Mr. Matisse teaches our most vulnerable learners and is faced with the challenging situations on a daily basis. That's why she's my nominee for Staff Member of the Month, Women Millpon School. So congratulations to you. Okay, oh, and we have videos, okay, when we told everybody, so Tom hit it.
We're here today to surprise Teresa Garris, one of our bus drivers, as Employee of the Month. So come on, let's go, surprise her on her bus. Hi, Teresa. We're here to surprise you. You're the employee of the month.
Get out of here.
Yes. Tracy Whalen nominated you. Millpon School.
Oh, I've never had that before.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Wow.
All right, I just want to thank Teresa and congratulate Teresa for helping my daughter on the school bus. Um, there was an incident where she saw my daughter getting off the school bus. She's 16, and she made sure she was in a safe situation. And I found out that she does that for all students. So I would like to thank her for taking good care of my daughter and for all the children of Lacey.
Hi, we're here at Millpon. We're going to go in and we're going to surprise Mrs. Matice because she is our Teacher of the Month. We're so excited. Here we go.
You have a special day today.
I do?
Yes. You mean Ms.? Because you have been nominated and selected as our Staff Member of the Month.
Oh, my God, so deserved. So deserved. I couldn't do without everybody. Yay. So sweet.
Hi, I'm Cara Ruff. I'm a social worker here at the Millpon School. I work on the child study team, and I have the pleasure of explaining why I nominated Janine Matice for Staff Member of the Month. There are so many reasons I can go over, but the main thing for Mrs. Matice is she is the most loving, patient, kind, accepting teacher that I've ever worked with. She goes above and beyond for her students, and she works with some of our most vulnerable learners with so many challenges that have come their way in their short little lives. But she makes each and every one of those kids feel right at home, so welcomed, no judgment, um, and they know it. They, they really feel accepted, um, you know, even some of the hardest kids. She handles it with grace. She never complains. She does whatever we ask her to do with a smile and gives it her all. She never says no. She goes 110% above. So she's just an amazing. It is an honor to work with her, and I'm so glad that she got this honor.
Really great. Congratulations again, and Tom, now our Lacey Minute, yes? Thanks, Tom. We'll never know what to do if it actually takes one minute.
Okay. All right, so thank you to Mr. Merman once again and our students for putting our Lacey Minute together. Again, just a reminder to keep the videos and the clips coming so that we can keep putting Lacey Minutes together, or Lacey Two and a Half Minutes, which is, I think, what we're going to have to start calling it. Okay, so I'm going to conclude my comments tonight to just recognize two of our outgoing board members. Uh, we bid farewell to board members, Mrs. Donna McAvoy and Mr. Ed Scanlon. This marks your last board meeting, and I don't know if you're happy or sad about that, but lots of hours go into volunteering as a board member, and I think that that's something that people don't realize until you get here. And so I, on behalf of the board, want to personally thank you for your years of service and dedication to the Lacey Township School District, to the students, to the families, to your fellow board members, and for all of your collaboration with me. I have enjoyed working with both of you. But I believe Mr. Polino has a couple more things that he has to say and some things to read. So I also, while we're bidding farewell to you, want to welcome Mrs. Armato and Mr. Coniday, who will be joining us in January at our reorganization meeting. So, Mr. Polino.
Thank you, Dr. Prair. So yes, it's, uh, with sadness and excitement that I, I wish, uh, wish them farewell and good luck to Mr. Scanlon and Mrs. McAvoy. And like Dr. Prair said, um, I was very grateful to have the honor to work with them side by side. Out of all the board members, these two board members, we have like a special bond. We sat in countless number of hours of, of negotiations for I don't even know how many contracts. So we spent a lot of time together. Um, I spend more time with them than I think I did my wife this past year and a half. So, um, and I thank them for their diligence and their hard work, and we're, you know, certainly going to miss them. Um, but there's always next year, so, um, if you're so inclined. So I'd like to have Mrs. McAvoy come make her way up. We have a resolution for the two of you. Whereas Donna McAvoy served two terms as a member of the Lacey Township Board of Education, whereas Donna McAvoy has always displayed dignity and respect for the position to which she has been elected by the voters of Lacey Township School District, and whereas during her service to the Lacey Township Board of Education, she served as president of the Board of Education 2021, actively served as chair of both the finance and curriculum committees, was a New Jersey State School Board Association delegate, Ocean County delegate, and served on a number of ad hoc committees. And whereas Donna McAvoy always displayed fairness, integrity, and dignity in dealing with the issues presented to the board for decision-making, caring about what was most important, the kids. And whereas Donna McAvoy's experience in professional life as an educator for 30 years served the board as she had a passion for curriculum and developing the whole child, her inquisitive nature allowed her to quickly create understanding, assist with problem solving, and gather information to be an informed decision maker. And whereas Donna McAvoy was passionate about educating herself and being a dedicated board member, achieving. board member, achieving the highest ranking of a Certified Board Leader, earning certification as a Certified and Master, receiving over 100 Board Member Academy credits throughout her six years on the board. Whereas the Lacy Township School District will forever miss such a strong advocate for children and a friend of education. Now therefore be resolved by the Lacy Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the board does hereby formally acknowledge the countless hours of volunteer service to the student staff of this district and the citizens of Lacy Township during her three years of dedicated service to Lacy Township Board of Education. The board does hereby formally acknowledge with deeply felt appreciation the time, the effort, and sacrifices she made for our district, and wishes her many encumbered weekends, evenings to spend with her family and friends. I highly doubt she'll do that because she's got other adventures, but thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Congratulations to you. You know, you hear the resolution that goes quick, but truly, and I said this before, as a non-educator in the public education system, having somebody like Mrs. McAvoy, Mr. Scanlon, even Mrs. Downing, Mr. Peters, knowing how the educational system works from the inside, it's been a tremendous help on everything that me, the layperson, has done on this board, and their experience together totally is gonna be extremely missed, and I concur, I salute them on the hard work. So Mr. Scanlon, Mr. Vice President, come on up. Don't cover the tie. I like the tie. Don't cover the tie. Whereas Edward Scanlon has served one term as a member of the Lacy Township Board of Education and has faithfully, respectfully served as an exemplary board member. Whereas during his service to the Lacy Township Board of Education, Edward Scanlon actively served on a Finance and Facilities Committee, which includes food service, technology, transportation, and township liaison. Actively served on a Negotiations Committee and as an active and contributing member of the board, always made himself available to serve as an alternate when needed. And whereas Edward Scanlon always displayed dignity and respect for the position to which he had been elected by the voters of Lacy Township School District, and has always displayed an outstanding level of positive boardmanship to his fellow board members with whom he has served. And whereas Edward Scanlon always displayed fairness, integrity, and dealing with the issues presented to the board for decision-making, caring about what was most important. And whereas Mr. Scanlon was an advocate for students, was a voice for students and parents as he selflessly devoted his energy to making our schools better. And whereas Edward Scanlon was steadfast and never wavered in making decisions for students of Lacy Township Schools as his first priority. And whereas Edward Scanlon is a skilled listener, keen observer, and when he spoke, everyone listened. The Lacy Township School District will forever miss such a strong advocate for children and friend of education. Now therefore be resolved by the Lacy Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the board does hereby formally acknowledge with great appreciation the countless hours of volunteer service to the students and staff of the Lacy Township School District and the citizens of Lacy Township during his three years of loyal service to the Lacy Township Board of Education. The board acknowledges with heartfelt and deep appreciation the time, effort, and sacrifices ever made for our district, and wishes him many encumbered evenings to spend with his family and friends. Congratulations, Ed. Mr. Scanlon? I wouldn't mind. But, you know, I have to add one thing about Mr. Scanlon, who was a math teacher. When we were in negotiations, anything during finance or any stuff like that, somebody said something with the teachers' guides and stuff, and I'm sitting there with a pen and paper trying... And he's like, "Well, that's what this is." And I'm like, "Okay, you're right." And it'd take me forever to get there, but he did it, and he was tremendous with his numbers. But thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
Okay, my final comments. Once again, just congratulations to all of our Seniors of the Month, unsung hero. Thank you again to our select ensemble. Congratulations to our Staff Members of the Month. Just a reminder that school will be closed for the winter break from Friday, December 23rd through Monday, January 2nd, and we do have early dismissal on Friday...
Thursday.
Thursday, the 22nd. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Pereira. So we're going to excuse anybody that doesn't want to be here at this moment. So thank you all for coming. Happy Holidays to all of you, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Good night, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Congratulations.
No, go on.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take care, buddy. I don't see you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Congratulations tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Hey, man, how are ya? How's it going? Nice to see you.
Good morning, good job. Take care, have a good holiday.
You should have. You're a great guy.
Congratulations.
Hey, man, how are ya?
Me too.
Congratulations. Good night.
Congratulations.
18 years?
18?
You're...
No, I'm only... Two years. Two years.
Oh, for the state? For district, school district? Uh-huh. That's great. Thank you. Thanks, boys. Thanks, boys. Good night. You guys brothers? Oh, all right.
Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
I'll never forget it.
Yeah, there's not many things in this sort of thing. Yeah. I don't want a resolution, I can imagine. Sir?
Should we call Ricky and see what's wrong? The secretary's okay?
No, good. Okay, so I could clear a house real quickly, can't I? Mrs. McAvoy left too? Meeting adjourned. Okay. So we're gonna go on to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand. When called upon, state their name, address, and affiliation. Attention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the board present. Comments will be made on one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized, and this portion of the meeting is for public comments only, and there will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. With that, I open the floor. Come on down, Mrs. Descends. I didn't recognize you. You're not wearing red this time of year.
There's only colors besides red for the holidays. Regina descends a sunset drive sunrise beach. I hope I don't run out of time because I have a couple issues. In about two weeks, Mrs. McAvoy will have her freedom back. Now she knows how truly hard it is to juggle a life while in negotiations. Everyone deserves an equal chance at doing it, and I did my share in 2015, 16, and 17. Mr. Scanlon, you also put in a ton of extra time with negotiations. Congratulations and thank you both for your service. Enjoy your time off. Everything Frank said about all the time involved is totally true. So I finally had a chance to catch up on committee minutes for 2022. I was rather distressed when I read the November Finance Committee minutes that the committee had asked Ms. Sylvia to formulate a timeline for a referendum. That is a topic that should be discussed by the board and public. I also feel a board vote should be taken to make such a major request of an employee, and the public is entitled to know about details before the board and district try such a financial maneuver. According to the New Jersey School Board Association, decisions of any sort are not supposed to be made by or in committees. In my opinion, this is an issue for the board of a whole in public. Need I remind everyone that I have 19.8 million reasons to be leery of any suggestion of a referendum again after what happened the last time? There's a 30-year member on the board that should know the importance of maintaining a five-year facilities plan without tapping the public. If the board is even considering air conditioning or HVAC upgrades for all six buildings, my first question would be, how does the district plan to pay for the electricity to run this? Have any of you ever examined the electric bills in detail? Only one school can be electrically self-sufficient from time to time with the solar, and that is the Forkett River School. All the other buildings still get some power off the grid, and you can see the summer spikes in the schools that have some portion or all air conditioning. The chargers jump right out at you. AC in all six buildings is not financially feasible or sustainable. Next, I heard a lot of talk about turf for a football field. Please forget it. Not only does it involve new drainage, but the brand-new, expensive track would be in danger of being destroyed during this process. I would need a written guarantee that there would be no damage to the track if this occurred. Pre-K expansion program. With a one-time grant from the state that is insufficient to cover the cost, let's get real. The district is shrinking, and boosting it with a pre-K program is no guarantee that all attendees will stay enrolled through 12th grade. In 2010, 2012, enrollment was up to 5,100. Today, it hovers at 3,900. Enrollment is on Page 2 of every month's superintendent's report. Consolidation should be much more of a concern than expansion of any kind. In a nutshell, I'm saying that the public pays enough property taxes right now for this school district. Is Lacy in a race with Toms River to get 90% of its budget from property taxes? I will fight that every step of the way. Make do with the 2% allowed. To quote Buzz Lightyear, "Send your referendum ideas to infinity and beyond. Don't waste the business administrator's time with another boondoggle request for money." Also, I was told on March 2nd, 2022, three districting committee minutes didn't exist on Oprah Machine. So then I asked for them as a board member in 2021 and was told the same, and now Ms. Sylvia has produced all the minutes for this ad hoc committee for both 2021 and 2022. It's very sad to know that these issues are being kept in this committee as a secret when it's really seemingly a plot to get millions of dollars from the taxpayers in a referendum. Now, a couple of numbers for everyone. I missed the November meeting since I was at the Township Public Hearing for their new building proposals. I have both the November and December benefits costs for public reference. The benefit... The Benicard Prescription Plan was $322,447 for November, Delta Dental, $46,880. The Health Benefits, $832,74. That benefits grand total for November was $1,201,000. For December, the numbers are almost similar. $329,000 for prescriptions, $44,000 for dental, $830,000 for health benefits, again, $1.2 million. This is money that can never be touched in the budget because it's a contractual agreement, and people need to understand that the benefits are one of the most expensive things in the budget. Is that my five minutes? I'll come up a second time if no one else.
Okay, thank you. Come on down.
Kelly Mayolano, Commodore Drive, Forkett River. I just wanted to take a few moments to promote a little positivity because there are good things happening. On behalf of the Lacy Special Education Parent Advisory Group, I would like to thank the Board of Education and the administration for truly listening to our concerns and taking the time to make major improvements within our Special Education Department. Over the past couple of years, we have seen the Life Skills Room come to fruition, which took a long time, but we did it. Thank you. Dedicated therapy spaces, major improvements to busing issues, the sale program with its very own case manager, which is amazing. Minimal to no cuts to our Special Education Department, making sure we have full-time bus drivers, paraprofessionals for our children, and there's so much more. So a big thank you to Mr. Polino, Mr. Scanlon, Mrs. McAvoy, Mrs. Downing, Dr. Piera, Mr. Bond, and Mrs. Savarsky. They've all met with us, listened, took the time out of their lives to genuinely help our Special Education Department. We look forward to continuing that great work. I also wanted to give an even bigger thank you to Mr. Scanlon. A lot of times, he seems to be the voice of reason up there. He created the idea of a budget workshop in the efforts to promote transparency to the public, initiated the idea of voting on individual agenda items rather than grouping them together, which did create a lot of transparency because now we understand what you're voting for. Three years ago, Mr. Scanlon had run for the board for students with special needs who were not given a voice for a very long time. It seemed every time cuts had to be made, it came from the Special Education Department. We are not seeing that anymore, and we hope this continues. So thank you for serving on this board. We are sad to see you go, but happy that you'll be able to help us over here. Your dedication to our children and the district is truly appreciated. Thank you for making education first, and we also love you, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Anyone else? Come on down.
Bill Coon, 1107 Oahu Drive, Forkett River. We left our crew home this weekend, or this week, figuring we'd give you guys a break for a month. We're just looking at the operating district, the rod grant, where you guys are replacing rooftop units. Do we know if that has anything to do with some stuff down at the end of C-Haul up in the roof? Or is that something we can't discuss here?
So there's a list of priorities for the grant, and Mrs. Sylvia and the superintendent are working on that list. So, and that's how the grant works, so right now that's where we're at.
Is there a way to find out how that list is coming about or what the priorities are?
Is there not a finalization on it? There is?
Not yet. So rolling January.
Okay. All right. Guess that's about it then for me. Thanks.
Thank you. That was easy. Anyone else? Come on down.
My other topic and concern is for candidates for next year for the Board of Education. Please, parents, students, please consider running for a seat. You need to be 18 and able to read, write, and speak English, be a U.S. citizen, and a registered voter. Only 10 signatures are required to get your name on the ballot for Board of Education. If anyone has questions about the process, I'd be happy to speak to anyone interested in becoming a candidate in 2023, and the deadline to apply is usually the 4th Monday in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So with that, we're going to move on to board committee reports. I'm gonna start down my left, Mrs. Close, for policy.
We had our policy meeting December 7th. It was myself, Mr. Peters, Mrs. Downing, Dr. Pereira, and Ms. Sylvia. We did not have any new policies to discuss, no curricular items to discuss. For safety and security, we went over technology, security. Supervisor of information technology, Jason England, provided the committee with an overview of security steps implemented to protect the district's technology infrastructure. We had no LTASA agendas to discuss. We also discussed... Ms. Sylvia led a discussion about the intention to apply for the rod grant in January 2023, and we briefly discussed the school calendar, and I think there were still a few adjustments that were being made on that. And that was pretty much it. Does anybody have any discussions? No, I would like to say something if no one doesn't. It's about the rod grant. So when I heard about the rod grant that supports the HVAC, I was thrilled. I thought, wow, the timing could not be more perfect, especially after last month. I was shocked when the list...
Excuse me one second. Is this a comment or is this part of your committee report?
This is my comment. About the rod grant that we talked about in policy.
All right, you wanna save it for your comments so we can do the committee report?
No, it's okay, because hopefully we can get a discussion, but whatever you want to do.
No, if you're making a comment about the rod grant, you discuss it, why don't you just bring it to comments? So we'll do that in comments. Where's the finance committee speaks?
We discussed it in policy.
So, we'll discuss it in comments. Let's go with-
What are we doing?
Curriculum, Stoney.
Okay. Our December meeting was canceled because we only had one item on our agenda. So, it was a survey. It's called the New Jersey Youth Tobacco Survey. We've done it in the past. The survey was emailed to the board committee and then to the rest of the board in Friday notes. And we're putting it on the agenda, I believe, for today. But this, this survey has been sent home in the past. We are also, just a quick note about our CPAG group. We are going to meet, I believe, next week?
Yes, Monday.
Monday. Where we're gonna meet again and talk over just things that are going on. But thank you for your comment. I know we appreciate it, and working with you has been a pleasure. And I think working together has really accomplished quite a lot, as you mentioned. So, thank you. And, let's see, what else? Nothing else. That was it, because as I said, we did cancel our December meeting for the one item. Okay.
Any, any questions or discussion? Thank you, Ms. Downing. Finance?
We, we discussed the SDA emergent and capital maintenance needs grant. It's a total of $94,046. The money can be used for emergent repairs or for capital maintenance needs. And the district plans to use these funds for the doors and the phase-out protection. We discussed securing our Children's Future Bond Act. And the district plans to use these funds for doors and a sign-in, sign-out system for staff for security purposes. We discussed a ROD grant. These funds can be used for critical capital improvements and is funded approximately 40% by the state. We discussed an HVAC grant. The district has an opportunity to apply for HVAC grants. And these also can be used for critical HVAC replacement projects. We discussed synergistic again, and that will be on the agenda tonight, the vote for that. We discussed the Grant Committee, which is led by our new Assistant BA, and there's also a group of administrators on that committee. And they meet monthly, and they're coming up with different grants that they can apply for. We discussed food services and the operations. As of October, the Food Services Fund has a net income of approximately $100,000. The Food Services Fund has excess funds that were required to be spent on food services. To date, they purchased ice machines, a van, a refrigerator, milk cooler, and software to aid with menu planning and inventory. They're also planning to purchase new cafeteria tables and cameras in the cafeteria. We discussed that we will be hiring two new preschool teachers. There is a need for that due to the increase in the district's three-year-old enrollment. We're hiring six new paraprofessionals. They're needed due to the increase in the new rooms that we're getting for the preschool students. We discuss upping the certified teacher substitute rate. It's currently $105, and we're voting tonight to increase it to 115 a day. This district is low in comparison to the other districts in substitute pay, and we definitely need substitutes here. We discuss security for all district employees. We will be purchasing hardware to assist. So when every staff member comes in the building, they will swipe in, and then when they, we leave, they will swipe out. That's in case there's an emergency. We need to know where every staff member is if there's an emergency at a particular school or building. We discussed battery backup. We need backup to help protect our technology in the event of power failures. And that will also be on the agenda tonight. And that was our meeting. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Armato.
In reference to the key card, I guess, we're gonna use for the staff members, swiping and swipe out? Is there any talk about getting them for students too? Because I think, as much as we want to know where our staff is, I think we also want to know where our children are.
Right. No, we did not discuss that, but I'm sure it could go on the January agenda.
Okay.
I have a question too. The grants, did they come up with any grants yet?
So, they are working on them right now. So, they're supposed to look for them and go back to the Assistant Business Administrator, and they meet every month to discuss what they came up with.
And one other question, sorry, I never ask questions.
I know.
The cafeteria, you had all this money left over. Couldn't we have taken, Sharon, you would answer this probably, couldn't the money go back to lower the cost of lunches for kids? Or did, that's not allowed to do?
We really can't. We have to have a certain price on the meals. We actually do a calculation each year. It has to be within a certain range as compared to what the federal reimbursement rate and the state reimbursement rate is.
Okay, so is there any chance we could lower it for next year?
We can look at it.
Look at it?
Yeah, again, it's a calculation we do each year.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, Dr. Berg, have I got anything? Nothing else? So, we'll go to board member comments at this point. So, I'll start down there, Ms. Close, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Start over, sure. When I heard about the new grant that supports the HVAC, I was thrilled. I thought, wow, the timing cannot be more perfect, especially after last month. I was shocked when the list was presented, and the wrestling room was not on there. Our coaches, alumni, taxpayers, parents, and more importantly, our current student body have asked us to assist them with the expansion of the wrestling room for at least two years. The only roadblock is the new HVAC. All of us sitting up here, I said over and over, we support you. So I think it's time we show them. The four units that we're looking to replace are all functioning but one. The current unit in the wrestling room is from 1982. I'm sure it is on its way out as well. I'm suggesting adding the wrestling area and C-Hall to the application. I spoke to Ms. Sylvia today about the two HVAC grants on the agenda. There is no dollar amount on either of the grants set. We just need to have the plans ready to go when the application's open. We still have a little time to discuss what we're applying for, so let's make this happen for the kids and give the coaches the tools to continue to grow the program. We talk about what makes a student a better learner. We don't know what motivates them not to skip school and to keep them engaged. It's important to look at the whole student. Is it the arts, the future of the new STEM room, the band, or clubs or athletics? Let's face it, we've had a few rough years up here, lots of turmoil. Let's make a positive change and turn things around. Time to turn around, low staff morale, and bring some excitement to our district and show them the support that we deserve. I'm hoping others feel the same as I do. Again, a good thing about these two grants we are approving to apply for tonight is there's no set limit on the amount. Let's add C-Hall HVAC to the grants and see what comes back. So, that was that. I do want to say thank you for serving Ed and Donna. I appreciate your time here on the board, and I wish you both luck. And thank you so much for volunteering.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Close. Mr. Peters?
I'm gonna say my comments, but when did you want me to do Student Spotlight? I'm supposed to do that tonight.
Oh, you want to do it now? Go ahead.
I'll do it now? I'll do that first?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
I'm talking about wrestling because I pick free wrestlers. And I'm sure you guys have heard of the Moynihan family.
Yes, very much so.
Lacey High School has shaped me who I am today. Sports had the biggest impact on me. I played soccer when I was a wrestler. While both of these sports, unique in their own ways, they taught me how to be a leader, a friend, a hard worker. Taught me how to sacrifice and go the extra mile myself for my teammates and gave me character. These are skills that I use every day, even though I'm being utilized subconsciously. I graduated in 2018 and attended Elizabeth Town College where I got my bachelor's degree in data science. I continued to wrestle at English Elizabeth Town College and would not have had attended school if it was not for Lacey Township's wrestling program. Through college, throughout college, I completed multiple internships. This class, this class after work and wrestling schedule worked like a balance in parallel with my challenging class schedule and homework in high school in the middle of wrestling season. Subsequently, after graduating, I started my career as a data engineer at Artove Technologies and have been working there since. Lacey Township gave me the steadfast foundation in terms of outworking what you think you can do and even conquer and overshoot my goals. Without going, without going through the lion's den every day, without being sculpted by the Lacey lion lifestyle, I would not be in the position I am today. That is from Luke Moynihan. This is from Sam Moynihan. As a young man, I am now able to reflect on how growing up in Lacey directed my life and growing up with my two brothers, as of which I am the middle, was a blast. From going to school to playing sports with my brothers, we were always around. We were heavily involved in sports from a young age, probably playing in every league you could think of. All of us, including myself, found a love for wrestling and soccer. As a way through school, we played soccer and wrestled for the Lacey Youth Wrestling. This taught me to work hard and set goals for myself. When I hit middle school and high school sports, it really drove my days, always looking forward to practice or a match later in the day. Being part of a sports team in school, it gave the ability to make a lot of friends and more time spending fun and getting better after school. Honestly, I couldn't imagine high school without the sports. Although sports were a big part of my time at LTHS, the academics was always my number one on my list. While at Lacey Township High School, I was taking college-level courses and trying to take as many high-level classes that I was able to. After my senior year at Lacey Township High School, I attended Ocean County College until I earned my associate's degree in business and furthered my education at Stockton University for a bachelor's degree in business accounting. College was more of a job for me as I was working to pay my way through school. Upon graduation, I put applications out to the New Jersey State Police and the Newark Fire Department. Both of these careers, a very strict vetting, have a very strict vetting process that can take years to get into. During the countless background investigations, interviews, and over the course of two years, I opened a small construction company and have been running a small business ever since. Two years after opening my business, I was called for the state police and Newark Fire Department at the same time. After really sitting down and having chosen a career path, I decided to be a fireman in Newark. Entering the academy at 24 years old, I was the second youngest in the class and finished second overall in the class. After graduating this past October, you could either find me in the firehouse or on a construction site. If I didn't have the coaches and teachers that Lacey gave me the opportunity to meet along the way, I have no idea where I'd be today. That was from Sam Moynihan. This is from John Moynihan, the oldest brother. Played soccer and wrestled Lacey High School from 2009 to 2013. This proved to be a great opportunity to grow personally from lasting relationships with my peers and coaches. These sports programs provided an opportunity to hone my body, mind, and shape the person I become. Although I did not take advantage of Lacey High School for its academic, I attended the Ocean County Vocational School Maids Program, and still being able to play sports made all the difference. I was able to nurture a relationship I had to build while living in Lacey since pre-K, helping maintain my sense of community. These programs afforded me the confidence to wrestle for my college team. Stevens Institute of Technology from 2013 to 2016. I graduated with a bachelor's in mechanical engineering and have since worked for the Department of Defense as a mechanical engineer and a program manager. I truly believe that the opportunity to utilize these sports programs at Lacey gave me the confidence I carry with me today to strive myself to better work on my next goal. Three gentlemen from Lacey, the last names Moynihan. Great kids. Round of applause for these guys. We're all being successful, and I'm proud to know all three of them. For comments, very simple. Merry Christmas, everybody. Ed, Donna, congratulations. Enjoy the time off. And, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters, for that. And the Moynihan kids are truly great kids. Behind them, I know they boasted out how the sports was what got them through, but they have some great parents too, so.
Yes, definitely. It's a great family. Thank you for that.
Mr. Scanlon, you want to go since you were moving this way? Or you're not ready?
I'm ready.
All right, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Kieran McGovern, Sylvia Wolfhart, and Casey Simonsen for their awards for Student of Month. It's really nice sitting up here and knowing the parents of the Students of the Month because then you realize just, you know, how nice the families are that produce students of that quality. And I'd also like to, to use my closing comments, I'd like to thank my, my family, especially my wife, for all their support and help in the, in two campaigns in three years serving up here. And I'd like to thank the people who voted for me and supported me during those three years. I've enjoyed the opportunity to serve on the Lacey School Board. The Lacey School Board wasn't necessarily the first thing on my radar when I moved to town. I came here 50 years ago in June of '72. I was gonna say in the summer of '72, but I realized I came here, it was still spring. And school was still in session. So I came home the following week from school and found out that a knock on a door from a local politician who, next thing I knew, I got involved. And I've been involved in Lacey Township politics and town activities ever since. So, this is just a culmination of 50 years, and it doesn't necessarily mean it's the last 50 years. I also, as far as the school board goes, I follow my wife here, who was on the school board in the late '80s and made her mark there. And those meetings make these meetings seem very peaceful. There were, there were some real rhubarb's in those days. Anyway, getting back, I got off the subject there. I've enjoyed the opportunity to serve. I became involved with the school board this time around because three years ago, I felt that all the budget cuts that seemed to be coming were affecting special needs students primarily and by way of reducing, reduction in Paris, threats of bus drivers becoming contracted out. And that was just a short list of budget targets. There was also the custodial staff, and substitute teachers were on the, on the chopping block, it seemed. And I just felt that we needed to, we needed to have somebody step up and stand up for special ed. As far as bus drivers go, when that was coming up, we had a bus driver here who was given the Employee of the Month Award. That, that's, that is a real testament to having local people hired by the board where, where we have actual control over who's here and we know who they are. They're members of our community. And we really need to, I would hope that the future board would keep that in mind. I've been an advocate and remain an advocate of retaining all support staff as board employees, and I hope that the future board would see to the value of having direct control over who interacts with our students. I also encourage the board to continue to improve pay rates when it comes to these support staff employees. Otherwise, we're really gonna, we're gonna be in a problem. So, keep that in mind. They're very important people. I know teachers are important, but support staff supports the teachers. In closing, when, when we hear the comments about the graduates of the month, you know, Mr. Peters talks about it. I've been asked a couple of times if I would like to do a graduate of the month thing. Well, I have a problem with that because I have two grandchildren who are current students, but I have five children and one grandson who are graduates. So, I really felt like, hmm, I'm gonna get in trouble with this. I'm either gonna pick one or two of them and leave three or four of them out, or else I'm gonna pick somebody else and they're gonna say, what's wrong with us? So I just felt it was probably diplomatic on my part because I have six successful graduates who are all successes in their own right, who went through the Lacey school system from kindergarten through high school. And the, the school system can be proud of them. I'm proud of them. And that's one of the reasons I never, I never did that. I just like to thank them for their support too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Well said. Mr. Armato, all the way down here.
Congratulations to everyone who was recognized tonight, especially the choir. They were outstanding. And it's that same group that put on a great play again for us with The Christmas Carol, right? It was The Christmas Carol. I get confused. And if you haven't been to that play, you missed a good one. I asked Dr. Pereira tonight if she can, a big round of- Um, I asked Dr. Pereira tonight if she can, a big round of, uh, congratulations on the board outside the high school recognizing the, the cast for the Christmas Carol play, and let's get them recognized. Um, tonight marks the last meeting for Donna McAvoy and Mr. Scanlon. Donna McAvoy, um, besides what you do here on the school board, how you take time out of your day to feed people and make sure that no one goes hungry every day, um, every chance you get is, is just something that I marvel at and, and I appreciate as, as a peer, as a person who lives in this town, and as a parent and human being. I think it's a great thing that you do to make sure no one goes hungry. Um, Mr. Scanlon, um, it started out a little tough and, and topsy-turvy, but nonetheless, the, the one thing I admired about you is we always conducted business. Um, we never brought personal differences into the, to the meetings. We conducted business as professionals, and as time went on, I, I grew to admire you as well. And, and not only you, your wife, for all she does for this town with the Lacey 5K and, and the rec building and everything else you guys do. I wish you both nothing but the best as you, uh, walk out of here maybe one last time as board members. Who knows? Maybe there'll be a revival.
Oh, yeah.
As we say, as we say goodbye to one year, we welcome another. And I'm excited about the upcoming year and look forward to working with my fellow board members. I think Regina said it, um, you don't realize what's going on until you sit at this dais. And you sit in a private meeting and you, you work with six phenomenal people every day. Again, uh, we're not always in agreement, but nonetheless, when we go into that meeting room, we do, uh, conduct business and, and personal differences are put aside. So I'm really honored to be sitting at this dais with all you. And again, I wish Donna and, and Mr. Scanlon, um, a great, a great, great, great Christmas and Happy New Year with your friends, family, and loved ones. And to the rest of the community, happy, happy Christmas. Where am I from, England? Um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Enjoy it with your friends, family, and loved ones. Hope you get to enjoy the holiday. Hope you get to take some time off and just relax and, and enjoy what this is all about, and that's giving and, and loving one another. So have a great one and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armato. Mrs. Downing?
Sure, I'd just like to congratulate the Seniors of the Month, Sophia, Casey, and Kieran and the unsung hero Reese, um, and Mr. Orlando, Orlander, and the Select Chorus. It was, I was sitting right behind Mr. Orlander, and I was watching his mannerisms and his, you know, getting the kids all worked up, and it was, it was so good to see. But wow, were they good. And Mrs. McAvoy kept trying to get me to sing, but you don't want to hear that, trust me. Um, but they did a wonderful job, and I look forward to tomorrow's concert because I'm sure it's gonna be just absolutely fantastic. Donna, I want to wish you, um, I, I almost don't want to say this because I know she's gonna be back. Um, but I want to wish you a lot of luck and, uh, take your free time and enjoy it. I know you travel all over the world, um, so enjoy it and don't worry about bored for a while. And I know you'll be back. Um, Ed, I, I can't say enough good things about you. Um, as a, as a running mate, we had some good fun times. Um, I'm sorry that we're not gonna work another three-years together, but I'm hoping you'll be back as well in another year or two. Take some time off, and Heather will run out of things for you to do, right Heather? And then you can come back.
Never.
Come back. So good luck. I mean, you know, thank you for all your service here. You brought a lot of, um, headlight to a lot of things over the three-years you've been here. So thank you for your service. And everybody out there, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And don't, please don't forget, as I always say, don't forget our servicemen and women who aren't gonna be home with their families this, uh, season. So Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yes, thank you. I just want to start out by, the Mill Pond School did a Veterans Day ceremony this month, and it was so touching to have all the veterans there and their grandchildren and great-grandchildren honoring them. It was phenomenal. And the two advisors there at Mill Pond just do a wonderful job every year. The service that the school, the kids do at this, uh, district is incredible, so I'm looking forward to working with the students, um, with the food bank. I helped to run the food bank, and we had the intergenerational club that come the other day. We had the Proud Pals today do a donation. So now that I won't be on the board, I'm looking forward to working with a lot of the, the students and bringing in food and coming to the food bank and giving them tours. Um, the Select Ensemble, we also, we had them at Municipal Alliance last week. They came to the Senior Citizen Luncheon, and they sang that "Mary, may I, mother," I forget what, how, what is it?
Mary, do you know.
"Mary, do you know," how touching that was. And they did it again tonight, and they're phenomenal. Um, so just in closing, it was my pleasure serving six-years. I truly enjoyed it. I hope that the new board continues spotlight on graduates. Mrs. Downing promised they would. Um, I enjoyed negotiating seven contracts throughout my years. That was, that was a lot of fun, serving on, um, the curriculum committee, the finance committee, and working with everybody up here. It's been my pleasure. And I'm sure you'll all see me around because I'll still be very involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. So, um, to wrap this up, so I just want to, um, congratulate our, our award winners of the month, our staff members, our seniors, um, truly amazing, um, congratulations. Our Sluck Ensemble Choir, uh, unbelievable. I, I'm saddened I won't be able to make tomorrow night because I'll be driving out to Chicago to pick my daughter up. So, um, I'm sad I'm gonna miss that, but I should be able to get that on TV, right? Yep, great. I too attended the veteran service at Mill Pond with Mrs. McAvoy, Mrs. Claus, Mrs. Downing. Uh, great service there. Uh, they were, uh, in hiatus for a couple of years because of COVID, um, and they resurrected it, and they do, they did a tremendous job. Um, it was, it was really an outstanding program. The Christmas Carol play, I attended that. Um, kids are great, you know? They, they, they put on a phenomenal show, um, and they put their heart and soul into it, and it really showed, it was, it was a tremendous show. So like Mr. Armato said, if you missed it, you missed a good flight. Um, CPAC. So I thank you for your comments and, and praising us and everything else like that. But really, it, it really goes to you folks because, um, you know, it wasn't until you guys really organized and, and, and you presented yourself as a whole to the board and made it much easier for us to work with you parents to get things done. And I'm so glad that you did that. Um, and, and really, you know, you're the folks behind what gets done. I mean, um, just as an organized group, I congratulate you and, and I wish you much continued success. And I'm, I'm here another year, and I'm, I'm gonna do whatever I possibly can with the rest of the board to continue the great work we've done together, and I'm looking forward to our meeting on Monday. You know, I just want to address a couple of things. I know Mrs. Descendus said something about, um, uh, the hidden things with a referendum. There's, there's nothing hidden about it. Everything comes and starts and comes out of committee and goes to the rest of the board. Um, you know, we have to look at it. We have aging buildings, you know? We, we need roofs. We need to upgrade things. Um, you know, the 2% cap is not gonna cut it. So we, we have things we have to do. And although our, our enrollment is down, um, you know, Dr. Pereira and, and Mrs. Sylvia and the rest of the administration are looking ahead to, to change things around and clean up our buildings and get them ready for our preschool. I, I would love to see, um, and I'm hoping maybe before I leave, um, that we could start something and have a full-time pre-K for all the children in our district. Um, because how great would that be to bring all our, our kids in, offer a free program to all our parents, um, and get all the kids on the same page education-wise? And that alone in the future will raise our, our grades and, and everything else like that. And, and, and I think that's a tremendous thing. In order to do that, we have to make some changes in our buildings, and we're not gonna be able to do it at a 2% cap. So we have to look forward to the future. We can't just keep stealing from Peter to pay Paul. Let me see, what else? You know, so let me talk real quickly, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Scanlon, uh, you know, thank you for your time. Um, you, you, like I said, you know, we, we spent countless hours together in committees, uh, negotiating contracts. Um, you're always with numbers. There's no two ways about it. And, and, um, I, I thank you for your assistance in that, you know? And it's funny because, is, is, you know, Mrs. McAvoy would be like, "Yeah, that's great, that's great." He'd be like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, slow down. Let's take a look at this." And, and, and he was, he was the negative positive in our, in our meetings, and it was, it was, it was great. But the only problem with Mr. Scanlon is every time we had a meeting, it was like finding Waldo. I'm like, "Where's Ed?" You know, and he's like, "I'm at Mill Pond." I'm like, "Well, we're at the high school," you know? So it's, it's always like finding Waldo, you know? Uh, we had to put a GPS on him. That's about the only problem with Mr. Scanlon. But he may, eventually made his way and we got things going. Um, so I thank you for your service. And, um, and like I'm gonna tell you and Mrs. McAvoy, there's always next year. So, Mrs. McAvoy, um, you know, uh, nobody can appreciate this position as board president until you actually are board president. And you really, um, it takes you a year to start really learning, have things to get done, and then you probably need another year to, to make really big changes with the rest of the board, but unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. But without the experience of previous board presidents, um, you're most destined to fall on your face. And, um, during my course of, of this past year, um, I relied tremendously on Mrs. McAvoy and also Mrs. Downing, um, to get me through the year, to, to show me, you know, uh, the, the ins and outs and, and what is and what isn't. And I thank you for that, although I spoke to you way too much. Um, and I'm sure that, I'm sure and hopefully it'll calm down in January. But, um, I thank you for, for your expertise and your knowledge. Um, and, and one thing, even though you, you're like Ricochet Rabbit bouncing off the walls all the time, you drive me crazy, um, one thing you do have is a memory like unbelievable. Um, things that you remember when people say it, it's uncanny. It's crazy. Uh, and, and it used to drive me nuts. I'm like, "Oh, yeah, that's right." Um, so, um, crazy. So some of the things, you know, Mr. McAvoy, you know, you do in the food bank. You do Hope Sheds Light, um, you do Municipal Alliance, uh, you do the Task Force, uh, the school board. Um, and, and plus you work still, you know, and, and down at Galloway. Um, I, I, you know, I always said, and then, and then you travel tremendously. And, um, I always said that I want to die and come back as Donna McAvoy. Um, so, uh, I thank you for your service and, and good luck to you. And, and, and I think Mrs. Downing is right. I don't think you're gonna be away too long. I think you're gonna give yourself a year, do some stuff, read with the kids, and, and then you'll be back. So with that, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Um, have a blessed holiday season to all of you. Um, rest up, and, uh, we're gonna move on from there.
Okay.
So let's go to resolutions. New business. Oh, I need my little chart.
Frank?
Yes, sir.
Before we go into new business, if I want to table something, do I do that now? Or do I, um, the, the rod grant? I, I would like to table that until we include the wrestling room and everything else.
Well, I.
Can I do that now?
In finance, um, we were told that if we didn't pass it today, we'd lose the time. Go ahead. What did you tell us?
So I, I think, um, I, yeah, I don't want to table it to, to, to. Excuse me.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Excuse me. So, um, I, I, I don't want to table it because, like you said, we, we could lose the funding. So, um, again, there's no set thing in stone yet of, of what the, um, the, the list is of the grants that we're gonna use them for. And let me, let me remind everybody too, and I didn't use my comments. So the grant is only for 40% of the projects. So we have to pay for the projects 100% upfront, and then we get reimbursed 40% of that. And again, the rod grant is based on, um, the priority, the necessity, and what's the greater of the good that's gonna serve more students than, um, than not. So I'd rather, excuse me, sir, this is not.
Not public comment.
It's not public, yes, thank you. So, um, you know, certainly you have saying, you know, we're gonna do, gonna be new president, new committees. So I'd rather not table it if you don't.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, where's that?
So, is it my end?
When, when it comes up.
Excuse me, sir, this is not public comment, please.
If you were to make the motion to table it and got a second, we would vote on it. If it got voted down, it would end the question.
Right, but I, that's, that's.
Then that would be the way to do it.
Right, but it's entirely up to him though. If he, if he's, I mean, if he's, if he's pressed on doing it, we could do it.
Right.
So.
When, when it comes up.
Yeah, so when we get, get to new business section, you can bring it up then if you want.
Mr. Polino, can I say something?
Sure.
Go ahead, Donna.
Okay, uh, Sal, from what I understand, what I was told is that if we approve the grant tonight, it just means we can apply after tonight. So it's not decided yet. There's a list, but we can still add to it or make some changes before we actually apply. So we just have to be ready. So we really want to approve it tonight and the other one as well. When I talked to Sharon, um, she said that one didn't even come out yet, but are preparing. That's true, right, Sharon?
Right.
Okay.
All right, now I know what I'm going.
Yes.
If you want to apply for the grant.
Then we can put things where we want them.
Right.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Okay, uh, so, uh, new business, let's go with, um, number one, minutes. Move, Peters.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Excuse me.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Number two, list of bills. Motion?
Move.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm gonna abstain on two and yes on the others. I'm gonna abstain on 949936 and number 953843. Yes, for all the rest.
Thank you. Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Oh, I skipped Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry.
Number three, transfers, budget transfers. Motion?
Move.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Number four, item number four, uh, S-1701, reporting for October 222. Motion?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Uh, five through 16 are, are finances.
I'll move that.
Second. Second for finances.
I'll second.
Say, second for finances.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, discussion?
You said nine through 16?
Five through 16.
Okay, I have a question on number nine.
No, five to 16, Frank.
Five to 16.
Yeah, five to 16.
I have a question on number nine.
Sixteen is use of facilities.
Right.
Why is it, it's, yeah, why is it sixteen?
Sixteen's facilities. You said finance.
Yeah, sixteen I have as facilities.
Five through 16, you said, but 16 is use of facilities. Five through 15, is that?
Yes.
And.
So it should be five through 15.
Right.
It should be five through 15, Mr. President.
Finance and use of facilities.
Oh, so, so it's not, it's under, it should be under finance and facilities?
Yes.
All right, so we're missing a title in there. So it should be finance and facilities, five through 16.
All right, I'm moving that still.
Okay. Got, got that?
I'm confused.
Could you repeat it again? So instead of just saying finance, the topic, it's finance and facilities, five through 16.
Five through 16, all right.
Yes.
I have a question.
We got a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion?
I have a few. The, uh, number nine, um, is this, do we know if this grant, if we have to pay back anything? Have we heard anything about it at all, Sharon?
I don't know the full details of the grant.
Okay. And then number 13, uh, the synergistics. So I've been over these numbers 100-times, and, um, the baseline, Sharon, this question's for you actually, um, that we pick, I'm just gonna say a million dollars. Are you gonna use that baseline every single year when you do the budget, the same exact number?
No, I would use the reduction.
So if you use the reduction though, then we're gonna be, from what I understand, we'll be in the hole in year two. But if we use the baseline number every single year, it kind of forces us to do the savings at the bottom. That's where we'll see it, from what I understand. So if we, this is what I was asking before, maybe he can help clarify. So let's just say the baseline is a million dollars, okay? That we, cuz I watched the video yesterday, he kept saying, go back to the baseline, every year you go back to the baseline.
Right.
So let's just say the baseline is a million dollars, but we save 108,000 the first year. The second year, when you do the budget, you're not gonna say 900,000 for the utilities now, right? You're gonna still say the million, right? Because if you say 900,000, we're gonna be at a loss of 55,000 the first year. But if you keep it the same, then we'll make the profit of the 138. And then the next year, if you keep it at a million, so year three, we need to budget for the million, then we'll get the profit of the 151. If you lower it again, we'll be in the hole again. Because we're only making 59 in 25, 22,000 and 18,000, if you keep lowering.
It'll be allocated to other places where we need the money.
Right, so then you're dropping-
I'm not gonna continue to budget it in electricity, a million dollars, if we're not gonna spend a million dollars in electricity.
Right, right. So if you do it that way, so let's, right, so let's just say we save a million. Realistically, then the next year, we're gonna say it's 900,000.
Correct.
Right, okay. But if you do that, that's use the baseline. And then you can only say the gross savings of that year would be 59,000, cuz we're not going back to the original baseline.
I, I understand what you're saying, but we always have to go back to the baseline. And that savings will get used in other places, that's the point of it.
And you're not budgeting it for it.
But you can't budget, you're not budgeting for it, is what you're saying? So if you don't budget for it, we can't, we can't pull it out at the end of the year. So we would have to go back to the baseline.
Yeah, we're thinking about it in two different ways.
I don't know, maybe he can explain. I asked him this morning, so that's why if we keep going back to the same baseline-
If we're not gonna be spending a million dollars for electricity that, in a year, because we know we have the savings, why would I budget that?
I, right, that's the question. But if you don't budget it, then on year two, we're not gonna get the savings of 252,000. We're only gonna get the savings of 59,000, minus the expenses, 37,000 and 77,000. So we're, we're gonna be in the hole if you don't go back to the original baseline.
No, not in a hole, because you're, you're not budgeting that, so that, you're going back to the baseline, but you're not budgeting it, so you're using, you're allocating it somewhere else. So you're actually saving it, cuz you're not, you're not budgeting for a million dollars. So you're gaining probably that 59,000 dollars as an income thing, but you're still, your, 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 your sources are lower, so you're budgeting it somewhere else. And saving that money instead of spending it here, you're allocating it somewhere else, and you're saving. So instead of spending money to the right and to the left, you're saving it on the left, and you're, you're applying it to the right, you're shifting it around, but you're still getting that savings.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but when I, when I asked, I'm sorry, what is your name again? Okay, when I asked you today, for this chart to work, wouldn't the baseline have to be the same for five years? Every, so we go back to the first year baseline?
That's exactly right.
Right. And if we don't go back to the first year baseline, we're not gonna see the savings.
Yeah, cuz you're comparing to the baseline, you have to have, you have to have a base, you have to start with a baseline. So, and you're always gonna look back to the baseline, say, we started with a million, and this is where we are now, where did we start at? We started at a million, so now we're here, so we have a savings of this. Because now we're only, we're down to 800,000. So you have to refer to your baseline all the time. Just like in the medical field, we always get baseline vitals, we're always referring to those. We have to go back and look to see where they started, and that's what we're doing here. We have to have somewhere to start. And you're always looking back at that, but you're moving forward by allocating the funds somewhere else, because now you're saving money. Any other on that, that's close?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, any other discussion? Anything else?
Just confirming, we're voting on five to sixteen, not five to fifteen?
Yes, sir, five, it's gonna be finance and facilities.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, five to sixteen?
Five through sixteen.
I have one more question. Why are we charging for Saturday Lacy Lions basketball, rec? Is that supposed to say Sunday?
Because it's Forkett River, there's not normally a custodian on duty.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
I'm good on everything, but abstaining from Lacy Lions basketball on sixteen.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
I'm gonna say yes, but no on number thirteen, synergistics.
Mr. Peters?
I'm gonna abstain on number five and no on number thirteen.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
And Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, tuition.
Move.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, eighteen to twenty-three, others. Health and safety, nursing services, athletic, curriculum approval, and extended school year, and New Jersey Youth Tobacco Survey, motion?
Second. Well, who's the first? Thank you.
Discussion?
One question.
Sir.
I'm not familiar with this, as I'm still learning. Twenty-two, 2022, 2023, curriculum approval, didn't we just do that one, a couple of months ago?